Good evening. I'd like to call the council meeting, March 13th, 2018, to order. Big round of applause for Chaparral High Spring Musical Performers. It's gonna be hard to follow that enthusiasm and excitement for today. I'll try, I'll do my best. Mr. Comacher has offered to do his impersonation of Frankenstein for us later, too. So, wonderful.
Oh, he did.
So...
Talking about my brother?
We have, tonight, we have an exciting opportunity for us. We have a special performance by Liam Nagar singing the National Anthem. After that, if we could have the city manager provide our invocation, followed by Mr. Stewart giving our flag salute.
Okay. Oh... My name is Leo. And I'm going to sing this. Good evening. My name is Leo, and I'm going to sing the Star Spangled Banner. (singing) Oh, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? O'er the skies and bright stars through the perilous fight, All the reports we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, Gave proof to the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say the star-spangled banner yet wait For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
I just wanted to tell you guys, he's been so excited to sing here for weeks. And when I was pregnant with the son, with my son, Ms. Mary Ann, the singer, was my was my 2:00 AM ice cream fixation. And she sings, so maybe that's why.[205.73][205.73](applause)
Would you please stand? Bow your heads. Dearly Father, Lord, we just give you thanks for this day, this opportunity to convene the public's business here at the City Hall. Lord, we just give you thanks for the privileges and the freedoms that we have as Americans. I pray, Lord, for just guidance and safety over all the residents of the City of Temecula and their welfare. Lord, we just ask for wisdom and discernment for the city council, the city staff, in conducting the business of this great city. And we glorify you with all that we say and do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Please stay standing and join me in honoring the flag of our great nation. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Liam. All right. Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Comacher?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nagar?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Ron?
I am here. Okay. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have one public comment, and that is Mark Caton.
Mark, hang on, I gotta read this first, sorry. Public comments. Total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record for all public hearing or council business items on the agenda. A request to speak form may be filed with city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item, and each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Mark, good evening.
Oh, there's your head.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Speaking on behalf of the Temecula Education Foundation and our event coming up, which is Taste of Temecula Valley, and just a quick one, would appreciate as many people as possible to attend, and we've got some great things planned. And especially Saturday was, the kids' area is even bigger than we've had in the past. Some great new restaurants that have signed up, so great food, great wine, and microbrewers. And we also do have still a few seats left in the VIP area, although hopefully many of you will be in that area, and we'll see you then. But thank you so much for the support from the city and the help from community services and that whole team, especially Dawn. So, thanks so much.
Thank you, Mark. And I'm sure we'll see you three more times before then, is that right?[448.62][448.62](laughing) I look forward to seeing you again. All right. We're now into city council reports. Do my colleagues have anything to report?
Yes, I do.
Hang on, let's see. Oh, Mr. Nagar is first in the queue.
But you know what? With the mayor's discretion, I'll defer to the rookie.[464.62][464.62](laughing)
All right. Well, you know what? In that case, Mr. Stewart.
All right. So I got a couple of things. I'm probably gonna steal community services thunder, but the park that we opened at Vale Ranch Park was just amazing. It has a gravity rail, which is kind of like a zip line, only you can sit on it like a swing, or you can hold on to it like a zip line. And I did it like five times before I let the kids go on it. And I posted it to my Facebook page, and I've gotten over 37,000 views of that particular park. So, incredible. We're getting comments from people in San Diego who wanna come up and visit this park in South Temecula. So, that's one. And then, the construction class that the city is putting on right now. I've kinda taken it a little step farther. I've actually started bringing in contractors that I've come in contact with who are giving their expertise on what it takes to be in their particular trade. So I've had a drywall contractor, and he was talking about schlepping drywall up six flights of stairs, and what a joy and fun that was. And then, I've had a general contractor, and I've also plumbing contractors coming this next Thursday. But they all say the same thing, that the trades is something that kids need to look at, because they are suffering a shortage in the construction industry for these particular positions. So, this class, it's our first one, so we plan to do it again. So anybody who's interested, likes working with their hands, college maybe not be the fit for them, keep your ears peeled for the next construction trades class, because we most likely gotta be able to place some of these kids in the trades after they finish this course. So if you're interested at all, keep that on your radar.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Nagar?
Thank you. And I meant what I said as a term of endearment, 'cause I was gonna give you a compliment. I have to tell you, I noticed you've been, I've been hearing you've been attending all of these construction classes.
I've been.
And you've really been getting into the vocational aspect of it, which, you know, we have a Vita Culture program that's doing that as well. And I think that's just excellent, that you're focusing on that. And same thing with your efforts on parks and the openings of these new parks. I just wanted to compliment you on that.
Thank you.
Looks like you might've found your heart with TCSD.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I get that impression. I have two things, real quick. If you could put up the Circus Vargas slide, real quick. Is it up yet? There it is. The circus is in town. It's a great show. They're gonna be here till March 19th. You're probably wondering why a council member's promoting the circus. I'll just make it short and sweet. They come here every year, and for the past five years, they give out 500 tickets for free to the special needs community. People get to go to the circus that would never normally get to go to the circus. And so what this means to us as a community is when a business like that comes here to town and gives back, we wanna also give back to them. So it's a fantastic show. Go see it. You know what? It's definitely worth the money, so I wanted to give them a shout-out for continuing to be a community player. The second thing I wanted to talk about, if we can put up the Prop 69 slide, there it is. You know, this is a hard thing to talk about. Proposition 69 is going to be on the ballot this June, and what Proposition 69 does is ensure that a recent gas tax that was imposed by the state legislature last year, known as SB 1, what it does is it changes the California Constitution to ensure that all the money collected from that gas tax goes toward road improvements and cannot be used for anything else. And I'll tell you why this is important and why it's a conundrum. Many people are, and rightfully so, anti-tax. I think we're taxed too much, and it's certainly questionable as to how some of our tax dollars are spent. But it's in place, and you folks are paying the gas tax, and Temecula has about, in the next two years, $32 million of that tax money coming to us to begin construction of phase of the French Valley Parkway. In addition, over the next 20 years, it means about $2 million a year to us for road improvements. And so there's a movement afoot to repeal that measure. And there's some good reasons why some people wanna repeal SB 1. However, this council, and in particular led by Mayor Ron and myself, but approved by the entire city council, has launched a five-city coalition to try to solve the traffic jam on the 15 freeway. It's not the city's sole, the city didn't cause the traffic jam on the 15, and not everybody's coming to Temecula. They're going all over the region. But it's one of the worst freeways in the United States of America. It's in the top 10, and we need to fix it. So we have this conundrum, okay? We have a tax in place that nobody likes, but it is in place, and it means major road improvements to us all. We all want relief from the 15 traffic, and right now, there's no other sources or pots of money. So I'd like the council to consider a resolution in support of Prop 69. That's gonna be on the June ballot, and I'm gonna just be redundant, 'cause some of it is a little confusing. Prop 69 makes sure that that tax money goes towards transportation by a state constitutional amendment. If that passes, it probably takes the wind out of repealing SB 1, which signatures are being gathered to put that on the ballot in November. So we have a lot riding on it, and every citizen here has a lot riding on ensuring we get the French Valley Parkway under construction. So, little bit of a long council report, but I'd like to get a resolution for consideration in front of the council for support of SB 69, unless anybody really doesn't wanna deal with the issue. I think it's important, though, that we at least support that while the tax is in place, it goes toward that which it was intended.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nagar. Ms. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have high schoolers here tonight, so let's have a show of hands. Who's from Great Oak? Don't be afraid. I saw, don't put your hands up. No Wolfpack tonight? Okay. Chaparral, you're here, 'cause amazing entertainment at the beginning. And is anybody here from TV? All right, TV, this is for you. So I attended the playoff game for the CIF girls soccer Division II on Saturday, and many of us, including city manager Aaron Adams, whose daughter London plays on that team, and we had, one of our community services commissioners also was there, and we won the state championship in girls soccer Division II on Saturday at Temecula Valley High School. So we always like to recognize our, yeah, exactly. We love to recognize our youth and our sports teams at our local high schools, 'cause we have fabulous schools, fabulous teams. So if we could, with your concession or consent, Mr. Mayor, maybe put that on a future agenda item and have the soccer team.
We're already on it.
See? We are good. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Comacher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to be outdone by TPHS, I had the pleasure of attending a ceremony Saturday morning at Great Oak High School, where they were celebrating the state championship won by the cross-country team.
Yep.
So, and that was quite an exciting event. They put on quite a show. So similarly, I think, probably on different nights, I'd love to see them be brought in and recognized here as well. Also, just like to make a comment based on Mr. Nagar's comment about the circus. It was a great time last Thursday, I think it was, opening night. My wife and I took our two granddaughters, who are six and nine, and I'll tell ya, they had the best time of their lives. I mean, it just, they never stopped laughing. Stu was there with his family. They laughed all night. They sat there in amazement at some of the things they saw. It was just a great evening. So, you know, people sometimes say, "What is there to do in this town?" Well, we got a lot to do in this town. But don't miss the opportunity, if you have kids especially, take them to the circus. It's just a great night and a lot of fun.
All right.
That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Can I piggyback one more comment on that?
Absolutely.
Okay. I posted a short little video of our Thursday night visit to the circus, so if you wanted to get an idea of what's at the circus, the video's great, because I just give you a little snippet of each thing that we got to see, and they absolutely use no animals. That was another comment I got when I posted the video. Are there any animals in this? And there isn't, not even a little dog with a clown. So it's completely all human, so no abuse of any sort, other than human abuse, so...[1090.44][1090.44](laughing)
Well, it's hard to segue from that, but speaking of the circus, I spent last week in Washington, DC.[1101.01][1101.01](laughing) That's a good segue. That's pretty good. And just had an opportunity to continue advocating on behalf of our city, and both for transportation funding, to make sure that what Mr. Nagar was talking about not only takes state funds and city funds to make that French Valley Parkway happen, but we also have a, what, $110 million grant into Department of Transportation. So we're continuing to advocate on behalf of that, and also on the fix that needs to occur for completing the Myrieta Creek restoration project. So spend some time there. I have a couple of quick slides here. First, let's start with the state of the city. Little early to start launching this, but I figured it's a great time to start talking about public safety, and over the next few months, we'll be rolling out some new programs and new concepts and new things that we're doing in the city, and initiatives for public safety. Join me on May 31st. It's going to be hosted by the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce at Pechanga Resort and Casino from 7:00 AM, with presentation starting at 8:00. So you'll be hearing more about that as we go on. Just wanted to say that every year, the mayor selects a bit of an initiative or a focus on what they'd like to highlight for their year with the city, and this year, we're highlighting public safety. And you can see there, our new logo, Temecula Safe, and in homage to Mr. Comacher, and Temecula has heart from years ago, you can see there's a small heart there in the A. We haven't forgotten about that, Mr. Comacher. But we have a big heart. All right. Second, we have a new thing that we're gonna be doing on city council nights, and that is what we're calling, for lack of a better term, a Merchant Minute. I'm sure you've all had the opportunity to visit some of the really unique stores and offerings that are here, and one came across my wanderings in Old Town a little while ago, when I spoke to city manager's office, and said, "You know, we should start highlighting some of the unique opportunities here and do that on behalf of sort of economic growth and development of our city." So if we could roll that really quickly.
Welcome to our shop, Ouxavon de Provence, in Old Town Temecula. I'm FX.
Bonjour et bienvenue au Savon de Provence à Old Town Temecula. Je suis Lydia.
We are here in Old Town Temecula. We just opened a French soap store with a natural soap coming from France, the same recipe since Louis XIV. So we choose the town of Temecula, because when I study the market, it's the best place for us. We find a quiet area with pleasant customers. So we offer this kind of stuff in Temecula, because we saw that Californian customers need natural soaps because of a lot of problems of skin, like eczema, psoriasis, sensitive skin. So it's the perfect offer for them, and Temecula is the perfect place for that, especially in Old Town. And it's the power of our culture we share with American people.
All right. Well, that's exciting. So we hope to continue. It's an old town, just off of Main Street, other side of the street from the theater. Yeah. So if you get a chance, go by. It's an interesting little shop, kind of a unique experience. Okay. Closing that out, we are moving on to the consent calendar. We are, all matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from consent for separate action. Item number one, wave reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Item number two, approved action minutes of February 27th, 2018. Three, approved list of demands. Four, adopt ordinance 18-06, amending section 17.04.020 of the Temecula Municipal Code Regarding Temporary Use Permits and Adding a New Chapter 17.42, Collection Containers Establishing Permitting Operational Requirements and Procedures for Enforcement, Long Range Planning Application Number LR17-1180, second reading. And item number five, approve sponsorship agreement with Trauma Intervention Program of Southwest Riverside County, Inc., for traumatic incident citizen support. Item number six, approve an agreement for consultant services with Fair and Peers Incorporated for the Old Town Parking Management Plan Update. Item number seven, amend capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 2018 to 2020 to accelerate funding for medians and ornamental barriers citywide from fiscal year 2018 to 19, fiscal year 2017 to 18. Item number eight, amend the capital improvement program budget for fiscal years 2018 to 22 to accelerate funding for sidewalks citywide. Fiscal, gosh, this seems like just a repeat of what I just read. Fiscal year 2018-19, award construction contract to Eagle Paving Company, Inc., for sidewalks, Old Town Improvement Projects, Mercedes Street from Fourth Street to Sam Hicks Monument Park, PW 17, or 17-04. Item number nine, amend, what, more sidewalks? It's crazy. Amend capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 2018-22 to accelerate funding from sidewalks citywide from fiscal year 2018 to 19 to fiscal year 2017-18, and award a construction contract to Eagle Paving Company, Inc., for sidewalks, Sixth Street Improvements, PW 17-05. Item number 10, award a construction contract to CT&amp;T Concrete Paving, Inc., for sidewalks, Inez Road, PW 17-22. And number 11, award a construction contract to Aramex Group, Inc., for the Fallen Heroes Memorial, PW 17-07. Item number 12, approve the first amendment to the purchase and installation agreement with Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for Vale Ranch Park Playground Equipment Replacement, PW 17-10. Item 13, approve the first amendment to agreement with Mike's Precision Welding, Inc., for welding maintenance services. And finally, item number 14, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the Old Town Sidewalk Improvement Project, PW 15-06.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. I would like to pull item number seven. Is that the right one?
Move the balance.
Yes. And...
That's the second.
Move the balance.
Move the balance. If we can get a motion in a second. Oh, Mr. Nagar, thinking about the circus.[1562.73][1562.73](laughing)
You know what? I didn't vote, but it shows I did.
Well, we can, we knew.
We guessed.
I voted twice.
You feeling good about that? Was that a yes from you?
Yes, it's a yes.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Can we have a staff report on item number seven, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.[1593.01][1593.01](laughing) No problem. And the item in front of you is a request to accelerate funds from fiscal year 2018-19 to the current fiscal year 1718, in order to implement a pedestrian crossing at Great Oak High School. The plan on your screen now is a conceptual plan of what we intend to implement at the high school on Deer Hollow Way. That would be a crosswalk, a cross deer hollow from the high school's main entrance over to the entrance to the Patricia Birdsall Sports Park. The crosswalk would be a striped crosswalk. We would also be adding high-visibility signage and flashing beacons. These are what's known as rectangular rapid flashing beacons. They're a relatively new measure that's been adopted by FHWA for warnings on mid-block crosswalks, so that's what we would plan to implement, along with additional signage, advanced warning signage. Part of this project would include reconstruction of the curb ramps on both sides of the street to make those ADA accessible and more pedestrian-friendly. And then also, we would be adding fencing along the side of the park to channelize the pedestrians to that crosswalk location. This is a look at what those rectangular rapid flashing beacons look like. They would have the pedestrian crossing sign with the flashing lights. These would be pedestrian-activated, so when a pedestrian comes to the crosswalk, they would push the button, and that would activate the signs. They'd be solar-powered to provide the lighting, both daytime and nighttime. And this is a look at what the fencing would look like across the frontage of the park side of the street. So as I mentioned, staff's recommending that we accelerate funds from next fiscal year to the current fiscal year. Those would be Measure S funds that were previously planned for next year. We're requesting that council approve acceleration of $100,000 of funds. Our engineer's estimate for this project is $100,000, and TVUSD has agreed to provide a fair share contribution for the cost of the improvements on their side of the street, which is estimated to be about $25,000. And we're requesting that council direct staff to proceed with this installation this summer while school is out. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Nagar?
Thank you. I'm glad you pulled this item. Traditionally, mid-block crosswalks are not very safe, and this is, Deer Hollow is, is that a collector or an arterial?
It's a collector. It's a four-lane collector.
Okay. And so there's a false sense of security when you're crossing mid-block. Pedestrian, or, you know, pedestrians have that false sense of security. In fact, it's probably that dashing across the street is what's prompting this, students dashing across the street. But also, traditionally, people in vehicles don't anticipate stopping at the crosswalk. So what is the consensus or thinking that this is a good solution and not making it more dangerous?
Well, this is a relatively new addition to the... Well, this is a relatively new addition to the MUTCD, the installation of these types of flashing beacons to advise drivers of the upcoming crosswalk. And then we would have plenty of advanced signage on the road, signs on the road, as well as the legends in the road that there is a crosswalk approaching. We are, as you mentioned, there's quite a bit of pedestrian activity there going across the street with the high school. We have been working with the high school as far as providing a crossing guard during the high pedestrian crossing times that would assist with warning drivers of the crosswalk at that location. And we fill with all the signage and flashing beacons that this would be considered a safe location.
Okay. So you mentioned a crossing guard. When would the crossing guard be there? And who's paying for the guard?
That would be something that the school district would provide, and during the early morning hours when students are arriving, and the afternoon when students are leaving.
It's typically like 40 minutes before.
And then what about when school's not in session?
There wouldn't be a crossing guard there at that time, but the push button would still be in effect. So if a pedestrian were to want to cross during those non-peak times, they would activate the flashing signs, and then they would be able to cross. At this location, a pedestrian does technically have the right of way at a intersection in the street. So this is an attempt to channelize and to give the drivers the warning that there is a crossing at that location.
So a couple of things, just follow up, and then I'll be done. What's the distance? I still, hopefully you can answer my question regarding safety. I understand you put up all these lights and all this, but I'm wondering, has that been proven? Are there any examples? Are we just trying to see if it works? So that's still question one. And then question two is, what's the distance between this and the light at Pachanga Parkway and Deer Hollow?
You know, I believe the distance is approximately a half mile to Pachanga Parkway.
A quarter mile.
So...
No, I don't think it's that far.
Quarter mile, maybe.
It's probably a quarter.
So 1,000 to 2,000 feet, something like that.
A thousand, maybe.
It's a long walk.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the...
It's hard to walk.
No, well, what, well, I'm talking in...
Oh, you're talking about putting a signal there. Is it too close?
Well, yeah, we're asking people to stop at a crosswalk, which appears to be, I don't know that it's a quarter of a mile, but I could be wrong. It looks like 600, 700 feet away from the intersection. It looks like it's east of the intersection, 600, 700 feet, maybe, I don't know. It'd be good to have that information. I guess we may be asking people to stop twice at the crosswalk and then stop again at the intersection of Pachanga Parkway. I guess I'm wondering, has all this been vetted out, you know, before we willy-nilly maybe create a worse problem by giving a false sense of security crossing the street? I'm just wondering what the, I know the genesis was for safety, but how do we know this is safe and not going to exacerbate the problem?
Well, I can tell you that the use of these types of flashing beacons for pedestrian crossings is fairly well tested. They've been used for a number of years now, and there are many installations of these all across the country for pedestrian crosswalk signage or indicators. So this is a fairly well tried and tested installation of the signage.
And could you go over the costs again?
Our estimate is approximately $100,000. These flashing beacons with the solar power and the pedestrian activation, I believe, are approximately $10,000 apiece. And then the cost of the reconstruction of the curb ramps and the concrete work at each of the corners, all of the striping and signage, and then the fencing along the park frontage, we've estimated to total approximately $100,000.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protam, can I add something else to your line of questioning? When we met with the school district, and this is, many of you know this, it's been a longstanding challenge down there on that stretch of roadway. This was vetted in partnership with Transportation at Temecula Valley Unified School District. And one of the challenges that they're facing, and they see it every day, is getting kids to go down to that very intersection that you mentioned at Pachanga Parkway because of the distance. And so it's easier to illegally jaywalk. I know there's some in the audience, maybe, but so the conversation went to, rather than expecting people to get all the way there, which ideally we would hope they would, it's not happening, and they're not doing it. And so bringing that hopeful safety crossing closer to the campus was, I think, the impetus for the discussion. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe this also, did this not go to the Traffic Safety Commission as well?
Did it?
Okay.
Did it?
Well, we did, the Traffic Safety Commission did adopt a new crosswalk policy that does allow for the installation of what we're calling high visibility crosswalks at mid-block locations. I'll call it under special circumstances, and we've fitted that into this, to this project where it is a relatively special circumstance, and we're using quite a bit of measures to make this a high visibility crossing.
And I think the other thing I failed to mention was, yeah, there in Temecula, there isn't a history of mid-block crossings, but several months ago, with the approval of the Lynnfield Project on Rancho Vista, if you recall, we did approve, as a condition of approval, there would be a mid-block crossing at the district office as it related to that development with all the same pre-warning signage and so forth. So this is probably two of two.
Right. Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, well, I actually go to Great Oak High School, and I'm a mentor for one of the clubs, and I experienced this all the time, that there is a huge jaywalking problem there. So to somehow control that, and I like the idea of actually having crossing guards during those peak time periods, because you go to any intersection when school is in, and you've got those crossing guards taking those cones and putting them right in the middle of the road, you're not missing, you know, you're not going to accidentally miss this intersection. So I think it's a good idea, and I think it will, it is a long distance from where they're expecting the kids to walk all the way across. And even major events like the Fourth of July and stuff like that, that park, especially when Pachanga does its fireworks eventually again, that park gets a lot of activity, and so does the school parking lot. So there is, there is special event times when that parking lot and that intersection would be made safer with a crosswalk right there.
If we're commenting, I'm ready to comment.
Any other questions first?
I did. I'm in the queue.
Oh, sorry, I missed you. Please, Marion.
So I had a lot of heartburn with this one, but if I can address, like Councilmember Ramir Protam-Nigar, but in the old days, we didn't have the same Caltrans-approved traffic control devices that we do today, and those would be the flashing lights and the push button. So it's a call button for that crosswalk. So that gave me a little better sense of, you know, security for the kids and the fact that, my other question was going to be, is there going to be a crossing guard? And so that is really what sealed the deal for me, is when the crossing guard's there. So, but there are so many activities that go on at the high school, as Stu said, and, you know, it's going to be up to kids and parents and anybody who uses that crosswalk to be responsible at those times when school is not in session. So the crossing guard is what made me have that level of comfort.
All good points, and I'm right there. Concern is when the crossing guard's not there. That's a concern. There's a lot of overflow parking for Birdsall Park being used in the parking lot of the school, quite a bit. In fact, Birdsall is often without parking because of all the tournaments that are there. So I just wonder if maybe the Traffic Commission shouldn't look at this and kind of weigh those things. I understand it's being used all over, and I understand it's good, but every situation is different where it's located, and I wonder why wouldn't this have been vetted by the Traffic Commission?
You know, Jerry, do you recall that this specific plan go to the Traffic Safety Commission? I don't recall whether it did. I know we talked about the sidewalk policy, but...
Yeah, good evening. Specifically, this plan didn't go to the Traffic Commission, but a few years ago, Willdan Associates did do a circulation study around Great Oak High School. And so there were several alternatives that came out of that study. As you may recall, one of them was to install a, or the preferred at the time was to install a median along Deer Hollow with a fence down the middle of the road. This was a secondary alternative that they looked at. However, as you mentioned, at the time, we weren't really in favor of putting a mid-block crossing, and the technology wasn't there at the time that offered what we have today, nor did Caltrans. Also, they weren't in favor of mid-block crossings at the time, and they only had like, I believe they only had one, which was a signal, and it was an overhead beacon. So this is a relatively new technology. It is being used at different locations throughout Southern California. The other thing that we're proposing with this, not only having the pedestrian activated RRFB, but also we'll have in advance of this crosswalk, we're going to have an LED sign, which will be tied into, so when somebody pushes a button, the advanced sign will have LED lights around it, so that'll advise the motorists that somebody's about to cross that intersection. We also, you may know that we have some on Business Park Drive right now at Single Oak, I believe. There is a similar installation there that's activated by a pedestrian. So this is not the first one, and, you know, certainly it helps that. One of the other things that I might add, we were talking about a crossing guard, the other reason for having a crossing guard at that location, not only to help pedestrians get across, but also they are going to manage those pedestrians so that we have a queue of pedestrians and that we're not just having one random push button there occurring or pushing occurring so that we don't tie up traffic also that's coming out of those driveways from the high school and the park. So it's kind of a twofold reason to have somebody there managing that crosswalk.
Just a comment. All good points, and I appreciate it. I just wonder if the, we have a public traffic safety commission. I wonder if stopping traffic at the crosswalk might back it up to Pachanga Parkway, particularly at peak times when school's in session. I only bring it up is because we've studied this, the Public Traffic Safety Commission about four years ago. This council charged them to study traffic at every school. So we have that document, and it needs to be consulted and see what the Traffic Commission's findings were, and at least that's just my opinion. I'm not against it, per se, but mid-block crosswalks are traditionally not safe. Now, I understand we're talking about new technology, and that may make them safer. Admittedly, I'm ignorant regarding that, but I'd like to be educated before I just vote to do it. That's just my thoughts, mine alone.
That's correct. And traditionally, you know, like I said earlier, we, you know, as a city, we were opposed to mid-block crossing. Mostly, we were, you know, opposed to mid-block crossings at uncontrolled locations. This provides a little bit more control. So it's a way to look at, and Aaron said earlier, you know, there's a proposed crosswalk over by Temecula Valley High School with the new Generations Project, and that crosswalk is actually going at the intersection that's just east of the high school. So where we have that uncontrolled crosswalk now by the Temecula Valley, you know, their maintenance yard there, that's being pushed further to the east to provide a higher visibility. And also, you know, there will be a controlled crossing as well.
Jerry, I believe we would be able to actually have this on a Traffic Safety Commission agenda. Our plan was to implement this this summer while the school is out of session, so we would have time to schedule this for the commission if that's what the council directed. However, we need council approval to amend the CIP budget and advance the funds.
Quick question. I wouldn't mind hearing from Mr. Sullivan there with our Traffic and Safety Commission anyway. Just, you know, we can get your opinion. Do you think we need to bring this back to the commission, or do you think we're good?
I don't recall it ever coming to the commission, but I've only been on it for a year and a half, so the work four years ago or other approved, I'm not familiar with.
Mr. Yelman's was, though.
I was on that commission when it came across, and we had, I don't know, Jerry, correct me wrong, probably six out of eight meetings involved Great Oak in some way, shape, or another, because they kept finding different ways to get to the high school. So, and the study that Jerry references with the fence and the raised medium in the middle, I know that was definitely put in place, but there was a lot of discussion held at that time about that mid-block crossing. And I think the same discussion that it wasn't safe, but with this new technology that's being discussed, I think, I mean, I think it fits back to what that study talked about.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I make a suggestion? I think for expedience, why don't we do this if the council would approve? Let's approve this, okay, so we don't mire it in having to come back. But let's also send it to the Traffic Commission and just bring back a, bring back a report to us for the final approval. And I think if, that can probably be done in six weeks.
Final approval, or just...
Second.
Well, yeah, I would say final approval, because I really do want that question answered. I don't want to create more of an unsafe problem, and I'd like to see what the traffic looks like. Again, I don't want to be redundant, but the left turns going off Pachanga Parkway onto Deer Hollow back up now. Okay? So we're stopping traffic additionally, and that should just create, I just need to look at that. That's again, one man's opinion. If the council didn't want to go in that way, I have no heartburn with it.
Well, and...
So the motion was to approve now and send it to Traffic for a look?
For a look, and then based on their recommendation, us will approve it or not approve it. Yeah, I mean, we don't want to slow down the process, you know, in that regard, but again, that's just my thought. And we have a Traffic Safety Commission, it should have went to them.
And I don't think it'll impede the process, the approval process.
Pardon me?
I don't think it will impede the approval process for it to go back to Traffic for a look.
Mr. Comatara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a bit of a problem. Clearly, there's a serious problem today. I think we've probably all seen it. If you go there once, you've seen it. It's very dangerous today, and what's being proposed here will make it less dangerous. But is this really the best solution? And maybe it's the best solution absent other options. It just seems to me that we've always liked to do things where we solve a problem in the ultimate manner, and I'm not sure we're doing that here. So I could support this because it's better than what's there now, but if we do, whether it goes to the commission or not, I'd like to see some, a short amount of time under our belt. And let's take a look at it in six months or whatever, and, you know, let's see if it's creating any problems. There are other solutions, albeit they may be expensive, but they need to be looked at. And let's say, this is, it just seems like a Band-Aid measure as opposed to an ultimate solution. So I'm prepared to support it, but not as the final solution. We've got to find something better.
Can I chime in here? I haven't really said much yet, but, you know, I pulled this item, you know, sort of discussion with the City Manager's Office, because I think it's a good conversation for us to have. I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to pushing this back down to Traffic and Safety to have a closer look at, but if this, if this is a temporary solution, I don't think temporary should cost $100,000, you know? So I would like to see something that, you know, and from my understanding, you guys have spent a lot of time, this has been a point of discussion for many years, you know, in this area, and this is the solution that was come up with. Just for clarification, Mr. City Attorney, you know, how do we functionally go about approving something at the council level, but then kicking it back for a secondary approval with Traffic Safety?
I think really what you need to do is decide whether you're going to approve it and ask them to look at the long-term solution, or just send it back to them and ask them to review it and bring it back to you.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I would be okay with that as a motion.
But they could be the monitoring body, too, to see how it's functioning and then come back in six months.
Yeah. Because we do have, we do have an opportunity, I think, if they report back, and not a, not a decision on, you know, Brad, not a decision on the Traffic Safety, but, you know, go through it, look at it with a more careful eye, you know, work closely with staff on the issue, and perhaps, you know, maybe a conversation of... you know, maybe a conversation of the school districts able to weigh in on this as well with them. But, you know, and if in that process, what we approved tonight, you come back with and say, you know, look, that, you know, we've made a bad decision and maybe we need more time on this, then we can, you know, bring this back for reconsideration. But if not, then we know we're on the right path and we can continue moving forward. Because there is a bit of a timeliness on this. If we missed a summer opportunity, then we're pushing it out, you know, yet another year, year and a half before we can really break ground on this and come up with something. And it is a serious, you know, public safety consideration, so.
Yes. So, our motion is still good just with council request for it to go back to traffic as for monitoring?
Can I just jump in real quick? Mr. Mayor, tonight, what really, the direction we want to get tonight is essentially the movement of the money, advancing the funds from next fiscal year to this fiscal year. If the council's good with that in concept, that could be done this evening with the added direction of what we heard from all of you is going back to the traffic safety commission, thoroughly discussing all the options that were in the Will Dan study, getting clear direction and then coming back to the council with a recommendation. We can do that as well.
If I may. And that's where I was going with it. I see no problem moving the money. I don't know that we have to say yay to this solution or no to this solution. I think we can send it back to the traffic safety commission and let them look at it. And there's an integrity about that as well and I mean that in the most positive form. We tasked them two, three years ago, four years ago, to do exactly this study, to look at every single school. And they came up with a strategic plan for traffic movement around every school. And then just right off the bat, I don't know if it's a good idea or bad, but, you know, one of thinking, something I'm thinking is put a nice split rail, white split rail fence that matches Bird Saw along the roadway, along, on the Chaparral side. I mean, you'd have to hop the fence to cross the street at that point. Will some people do it?
Mean Great Oak.
Probably, yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you very much, yeah. Will some people do it? Yeah. But if we're talking peak times, maybe the crossing guard patrols that area and keeps them from hopping the fence. It just, we need to look at off-peak hours as well because there is a peak hour at Bird Saw when the school's not in session. And, I mean, that is a tournament park. It's used, I mean, geez, it would be used 24/7 if it could be. There's not enough hours, so. I'm not opposed to the concept, I just need to be convinced it's safer and I think our traffic commission could give us a good recommendation. So, I'll take a stab at a motion, but it's not in stone unless you guys like it. Let's approve this and ask for the final solution with the traffic safety commission's recommendation to come back to the council. And it might be this or it might be something else. Mr. City Attorney, we can do that, can't we?
Yes. Looking at the resolution, it's only to change the CIP. It doesn't involve approving the project.
That way, it takes care of Pat's timing as well.
Okay, I'll second.
Mr. Stewart.
Okay, I got a question. The, and this is for Pat. So, when they push the button, does it give like a countdown, like a regular walkway till they have like 35 seconds to get across the intersection?
No, it just activates the flashing lights and then we would have a time that they would be activated for that would be enough for pedestrians to cross, so that's all that button is doing is activating the lights.
Is there a secondary thing we can put up for something like that? Because I think human nature needs a timeframe. And so, I think, yeah, if there was a way to have some sort of a, where there's like a red hand that says stop, you know, no, because otherwise, traffic, like Mike was saying, it could possibly back up if people are just sporadically going across. Be nice if there was like a time period they were allowed and then it went red for, you know, for the actual walkway to allow...
That's what the crossing guard basically does.
Yeah, I know, during peak time, but during off time, like when there's events going on at soccer games or football games. I mean, there's, like you said, there's families that'll be, you know, those lights could literally be flashing for a couple hours. Who knows, you know?
Jerry may have a comment on that too, but the beacons, the way they are set up now is what is the adopted device in the MUTCD. I don't believe that would include a pedestrian countdown timer. We do use the countdown timers at our traffic signal, our signalized intersections, but I'm not sure that would be an appropriate use at a flashing beacon location.
Yeah, I have not seen it at this type of installation.
No, and...
So, now we're getting it more into a pedestrian signal as opposed to a rapid flash.
Warning. Yeah, because it resets, so if somebody's coming in late and all that, if they're getting ready, they just push the button again and it resets for that period of time that it's meant to allow somebody to cross. So, doesn't, you know, you can always run across the street without pushing it or always run across the street at the last second.
And they will.
You know, I mean, you know, we're not going to solve every contingency with this.
At some point, personal responsibility comes into play.
And just to give Mr. Nigali a bit more comfort, like I said, these are fairly well utilized throughout the country really and I could give you a lot of examples of where they've been used, if you'd like to see that too.
That'd be good, that'd be nice. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion?
And a second.
And that passes 5-2-0. All right. We are now going to adjourn city council meeting to the meeting of Temecula Community Services District. Mr. Comatero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we're all here tonight. Any public comment? Okay, we'll skip that section and go to the consent calendar. It's just one item, item 15, approve the action minutes of February 27, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Come on, there you go.
That motion does carry unanimously. Mr. Hawkins, what do you got for us tonight?
Just a quick comment, Mr. President. You asked earlier, what is there to do around and about Temecula? Well, as it relates to community services, I believe our CS Commission Chair Swink will be providing an informative, yet entertaining report a little later, so that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Adams, got a report for us?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Okay, and congratulations to your daughter, your family.
Thank you very much.
A stirring victory.
Go Bears.
They had us on our, biting our nails all late afternoon and early evening, giving us constant updates on the score, so thanks for that, by the way. Okay, any directors report? Seeing none, we'll take a motion to adjourn to the next meeting of March 27th. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any objection?
Nope.
We stand adjourned.
Reconvene the meeting for the Temecula City Council. Oh, look at that. And immediately, we're going to adjourn that meeting to a joint meeting between, it's just semantics, but I like whacking the gavel. Smooth move. Adjourn to a joint meeting, council and community services commission. Can we have an annual report? Mr. Schwang.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff and commissioners. I'd like to call up our commission to the front. Vice Chair Nelson and Commissioner Borgeson are here tonight. Welcome. Grab a quick seat. Just bring them to the front so we can see them, get them on camera. Commissioner Eric Levine is out of town this evening and Commissioner Willis has a family engagement tonight, so this is your commission tonight. So, I don't really have anything prepared for this right now. I just really wanted to talk to you from the heart. I think you've got a commission here that gives everything they've got. We show up to our meetings, to city events, ready to learn. We might not know everything, but we sort of want to soak up what we can from staff and really give the city back as much as we possibly can. And I think we do that quite well, to try to be humble at the same time. But I do think that this commission is working extremely well together. When we started talking about doing a presentation for tonight, we thought, well, we could do the PowerPoint or we could do, you know, just have a little discussion, but what we did is we created a video for you. And this really speaks to like our core of what our commission, what the department believes and our values of how we like to see things happen in our city. So, with that, I'd like to announce the world premiere of the Community Services Commission
Hi, I'm Zach Schwang, Community Services Commission Chairperson. I'm here at the Old Town Temecula Community Theater today, one of our favorite places here in town, and I'd like to talk to you about what community services means to me. I believe that at our core, community services connects people. Have you ever taken a city class or attended a show here at the theater or gone to the library? If so, then chances are you've either connected with an old friend or made a new one. We've been living in Temecula since 2001 and we've made many lasting connections through community services programs, whether it was youth musical theater, library storytime or one of our annual parades. We're thankful for the people that community services has brought into our lives. Community services is a department that fosters an inclusive environment for residents of all ages. We connect people through our beautiful parks, our recreational trails and our award-winning cultural arts programs. We strive to encourage an active lifestyle for everyone and support the artist in us all.
Hello, everyone. I'm Cecily Nelson, your vice chair of the Temecula Community Services Commission. I'm here today to talk about what Temecula means to me. I can tell you what it means for me and my immediate family, my husband and my bird. It just means great times, it means fun, it means stability. There's somewhere where this for us is our sanctuary. Temecula means to me future. I'm looking forward to the growth. I'm looking forward to all of the ongoing services and developments of things that we do for our senior community, our youth community and our families. We have so many great programs that are here around and about Old Town Temecula, our parks. It's just, we just, like I said, we don't need to go far.
Hi, I'm Dale Borgeson. This is my fourth year on the Community Services Commission. The Temecula Community Services Department, to me, means a place where families, individuals can find great activities to support their recreational time and to help them build a better family. Most people come to Temecula with that in mind, so people can come to us, talk to us about things they'd like to see offered and we can help make that happen. We can be a conduit for change if necessary.
Hi, I'm Eric Willis, Commissioner for the Community Services Commission, and I just want to tell you a little bit about myself. I spent the last 13 years here in Temecula, heavily involved in the schools, heavily involved in the community and certainly in sports. Run a baseball program out here and been involved in the high school sports out here in the baseball world and really just love everything Temecula has to offer. What does TCSD mean to me? When I look at TCSD, the first word that comes to my mind is family, because TCSD really is one big family. But more importantly, our mission, our goal, as I see it, is to bring the entire community into our family. That's the way we treat the community, that's the way we view the community and quite frankly, to us, that's who the community is. They're our family, the TCSD family.
Hi, I'm Eric Levine. I'm a Community Services Commissioner. I've been a commissioner now for about, going on three years, I think this summer. What does TCSD mean to me? There are so many great services, so many great programs that our staff here at TCSD provide for us. The city has really emerged as a leader in the region. Many of our sister cities around here are emulating what we're doing. That shows that Temecula is a leader here in our community. There's just so many different services. We're so responsive to the needs of our community. We definitely are doing it right here in Temecula.
What does community services mean to us? Home.
Giving back.
Purpose. History. Caring.
Service.
Volunteering.
Entertainment.
And inclusion services.
Special events.
To be loved.
Recreation. Sports. Programs.
Enrichment classes.
Enlighten.
Family.
Fun.
Responsible compassion.
Water safety.
Adventures.
Pride.
Making a difference.
We are community services.
So, that's just a little bit about us. I mean, I think you know this about your department. The Community Services Department takes everything that you ask them to do, does it amazingly well and then some. I mean, I think that if you look at that list, it's just sort of, I don't want to say it's unbelievable because I know these people that work in community services and it's totally believable that we did all that this past year. So, just a huge thanks. I know that as a department and as a commission, there's literally nothing we can't do. If we can dream it, we can do it and you're starting to see that now. I think we're on a really solid path with community services in the city. So, just a big thanks to Bea's in the back, a lot of help on this project. Thank you, Bea. Jeff helped a lot with this. Mike Morey edited Dawn and all her support. Everyone at community services is just amazing, so thank you.
I mean, we just missed Oscar season for that video.
Darn.
Hopefully, they remember it till next time. All right, let's see. Do we have any public comments? None? Okay. So, let's move on to the remainder of the city council meeting. Commissioner reports. Do we have anything from safety? No. Mr. Yeomans?
Not tonight, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Schwank, we've heard from you. Anything else?
If you don't mind, I have one comment. Not that I didn't just have the podium. So, I stopped at Veil Ranch Park today with my son and there was a girl there and I'm going to quote what she said. First of all, she said, this is the most amazing park in the entire world, right? So, in the world. And she says, she does the gravity rail. Says, this is the most funnest thing ever. So, that's the little quote of the day. Thank you.
Wonderful.
May I say something? I would just, I don't know what I'd give to see Director Hawkins on that swing. You know, I mean, I'd make a donation to a charity or something like that, but if we can get a video of Director Hawkins on that swing, I just think it'd be real valuable.
Done.
Perfect. Next meeting, we'll expect to see it.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it. All right. Chief Dehart, good evening. You have a report for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, Temecula Fire for last month, we administered 36 CPR classes, first aid to the public. So, the staff was able to complete those classes. Incident totals for the month of February were 715. 60 of those are traffic collisions, 520 of those were medical emergencies. And then a big increase in our call load was 80 false alarms, which is going to bring me into the bottom portion of our slide here. So, we kicked off our annual inspection program in March. We're starting off with all our public education facilities and that's going well. The inspectors have been working hand-in-hand with the school district and we're getting through the schools pretty quick. So, after the schools, we're going to move on to our high-hazard business district, where we have like the chlorine stamping and stuff that's going on. We've had some incidents there that we need to address, so they'll head off into that area and then we'll start working on our high occupancy businesses, hotels, motels and stuff like that. So, the program goal for us is to educate our businesses in the community about the current fire safety standards with emphasis on preventing the loss of life, property and revenues to our local businesses and community. So, and along with that is we'd like to reduce our unwanted false alarm calls. Year-to-date, we're at 148 false alarm calls. This is mostly due to malfunctioning alarm systems, alarm systems that have not been maintained. And basically, this is tying up emergency equipment for hours that they shouldn't have to be tied up with. So, along with that, my staff has community workshops set up here at the Civic Center to help educate our businesses and get them moving in the right direction. So, the first class will be April 11th here at the Civic Center from... So the first class will be April 11th here at the Civic Center from 9:00 AM to noon. Then we have another class in May and then we have a tentative one scheduled for June 13th, depending on how much participation we get on these first two classes. And if our public has, public or businesses have any concerns, they can call the 951-694-6405 or visit our webpage and, uh, we'll be happy to answer their questions, but, uh, our annual program is moving along and, uh, hopefully we'll reduce some property damage. End of report, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions? I have a quick one, uh, and it's both for you and I think our city manager. You know, the false alarm thing comes up and, and sort of cycles. Sometimes you have a lot of volume, sometimes you don't. And I know for police also, the false alarms for burglary is, uh, uh, eating up a lot of, uh, of, uh, public safety resources and I think a lot of that goes back to, you know, maintenance and upkeep and all that for the businesses. Could, could we get a report back maybe in our next meeting or so to, to let us know what the, uh, cause I, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, Chief. Um, and, and it is a, a bit of a burden on the system and we don't want to ignore alarms, um, but certainly if the, uh, uh, you know, if we have repeat offenders on businesses that just can't seem to maintain their, um, their equipment and all that, uh, you know, that's a, uh, I think an unnecessary burden on our, our public safety resources. So maybe we can get something back from both, uh, Chief DeHart and, uh, and, uh, law enforcement as well and maybe get a better take on that and see if we can, uh, come up with some better solutions to reduce that, uh, that burden. That'd be great.
We can do that.
Thanks, sir. All right. Anything else, sir?
No, that's all I have.